I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with the Wolf Hall. Dan Rodenhouse?
Here.
John Estrich?
You.
Virgin Hayes aren't here. Curtis Ward. Rick Budiger. We do them form. First up is, sorry, first is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on March 4th, 2024, as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll look for one second. One year.
Okay, we'll have to table the approval.
No, if he's second, then what happens?
He wasn't here.
It's fine. You don't have to mistake this because you didn't attend because if you take the situation where there's completely new council or a majority of the council from one year, the next minutes still have to be approved. So I think Dan can just trust that you two or you two are in agreement with the minutes and that he trusts your call on that.
Okay, I've sent the motion to approve the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. And then we have the minutes from the special meeting on March 12th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting?
Motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second? I second. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next is approval of claims and payroll.
So I did want to mention one thing about the claims. You will see out of the general comment due energy from the de-energizing of the streetlights for the eclipse, there was an invoice paid of $2,647.48. However, we did get an email from Duke this week stating that we qualified for our pilot program with the smart cell sensors. She probably didn't feel one of them reading, but installing smart controls on the streetlights. And his boss thought the application would be good for us with the new smart controls. So they're going to allow them to turn the lights on and off with a click of a button rather than having them to be present to re-energize them. He said the job of replacing the photocell sensors with the smart ones has been scheduled and should occur sometime during week of 3/25, with 4/5 being the most possible date. And then that should be ready to go for the eclipse, obviously. And then they are going to reimburse us the invoice that was paid.
Thank you, Gina.
Yeah.
The total for claims is $186,262.39. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
John made a motion.
John made a motion to approve the claims. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. And then payroll. Payroll is a total of $45,188.50, with over $342.98. Is there a motion to approve the payroll?
I make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the payroll. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is Michael O'Keefe from Frontier Communications.
Thank you, President Hayes, council members. My name is Michael O'Keefe. I'm the Vice President of External Affairs for Frontier Communications over Indiana, Michigan, and Ohio. And had a prezo that was, I was going to have up here for you. I'll just talk to it. But we're excited, the fact that we're coming into town. We're going to put a fiber-to-the-home network in town. It's a very, very fast network. And it's actually coupled with some grant funding as well outside of the city limits. So we're going to start building from our central office in town, a feeder outside of town to turn up some monies we have for a grant that we have for this area. But then we're going to use some frontier dollars then to build in the city. So I'll talk about that and our plans for the build, what the product looks like. I had some pictures of the network elements that were involved. But basically, it's, you know, we've squeezed everything we can out of our copper cables. Copper cables are older than me, probably older than anybody in this room. Some of them out here. And we, data is king. So phone is no longer what people really, really want. There are some people that are hanging on to the phones, but really a fast data connection is what everybody wants, access to the world. So we're doing this in multiple communities. We're doing it in Conner'sville right now. We've been doing it in Richmond, putting the network in Richmond for a while. All across the state, we're launching our fiber-to-the-home product. I personally, I ran operations for 32 years for first GTE and then Verizon and then Frontier. Moved over to this position after I retired for a couple of years, came back and I'm doing this. But I was part of the launch Verizon did of their fiber product, which is their fiber-to-the-home. So I moved my family to Keller, Texas, where they launched fiber and it was a fantastic network. Like we get 95%, 98% penetration in some of the towns down there in Texas when we launched. And this is even a better network. The only thing this doesn't have is TV. So if you want TV, that requires a franchise agreement to come in and set up TV. And you need roughly about 220,000 people, somewhere around 100,000 households to be able to actually put TV into a market. So there's only a couple of places in the state that would be able to accommodate that. But this is a very, very fast data network and voice. So you can have both. It's going to be available for residential and business customers. We pretty much blanket the town when we go in. We don't cherry pick or we don't, what we call, what they call red line and say, hey, those areas over there probably aren't going to take the product. Won't get as high a penetration rate, so we'll just, we'll just put it into the higher-end neighborhoods. We don't do that. We go in and we cover a town, which is different from many of our competitors that come in and cherry pick some of the higher revenue customers. Speeds start at 500 megabits. That's the base offer. Go up to 5G, 5G. Now, I always tell people when they hear those commercials for 5G wireless, that's not 5G, that's fifth generation. The average speed on a 5G wireless connection is about 150 meg. That's average. That means a lot of people get less than that. Some people get more if you're close to a tower and probably in a big city. So it's not a solution, right? The wireless is not a solution without a multi-billion dollar investment by the wireless companies to place little antennas about every other, every 100 feet in the network. So terrestrial connection, fiber, is almost foolproof. That 5G speed was 2G a year ago. Just like that, we made it 5G. So it's a speed of light and it's as fast as our equipment that we install in the office and at the house can read pulse and read light. So it's a fantastic network. Really, we've seen a big change. I mean, we've seen the demand for data double every year. It's been doing that for like 15 years. And we have people working from home. During COVID, we really saw those people working from home, telemed, remote education. I have a grandson that has e-learning days instead of snow days or just because they want them, right? They schedule three or four of those and they bring their tablet home. So he's over at my house doing those things. But so there's all kinds of things that are available on the, via data connection, a fast data connection. This is also a symmetrical connection, meaning same upload speed as download speed. So when you have 500 megabits upload, you have 500 megabits download. And that's important for big file sharing that's going on these days, particularly from working from home. I mentioned it didn't have TV. I personally cut the cord with cable a couple of years ago at my house. Had YouTube TV. I got the Big Ten Network. I could get subscribed to the Pac Ten or whatever. They don't even exist anymore, I don't think. But anyways, so you can, YouTube TV, Hulu Plus, there's a plethora of options out there for customers to à la carte, go subscribe to whatever they want from a TV perspective. And, you know, my wife has three Hallmark channels, so she's happy as well. So, you know, we don't really feel TV's really required anymore. You would see on the presentation, we include a URL on all our yard signs that we're going to be placing that the customers know we're coming. And it's also on door hangers that we'll place on customers' house. I'll talk to it in a minute. But again, this is a very reliable network. All my years in operations and leading the field techs, I didn't sleep when there was big storms happening. And there was always a storm in Texas or Florida or Midwest that I had. So I didn't get much sleep because I knew there was going to be a lot of trouble reports come in because of moisture and the fact, the impact that has on copper lines. It didn't have that impact on fiber lines. So unless you cut it, fiber's pretty foolproof. The trouble rates are very, very low from an outside plant perspective. So it's very reliable for customers. We have smaller equipment out in the field. So if you could see the pictures today, you can probably visualize a pedestal in somebody's yard standing about this tall, you know, green. And these are much lower profile pedestals, terminal pedestals for the fiber. The beauty is though, we're going, we're matching the existing network. So for aerial today, we're going aerial. For buried, we're going buried. That allows us to come in and build some communities within a couple of months that are primarily aerial with very little interruption. That's the beauty of being the incumbent local exchange carrier. We already have poles. We already have underground in the middle of the city where other people would have to tear up streets. And we can just pull the fiber through our existing duct lines. And we're also going to then overlash our fiber cable to the copper cable. The copper cables aren't coming down. That's always a question I get. We're not allowed to remove the copper plant right now because that architecture of that network's built totally differently. It's powered by our central offices with DC battery out to the house. So if they lose power to the house, they can still talk on their phone. This is powered by the home. So if they lose power, they'll lose their voice phone unless they purchase and they have the option to purchase a battery backup unit that they can install in their home, load it with the batteries, and they can talk for eight hours. Should they have a phone that's not plugged into the wall as well? They have to have an old type phone that's just plugged into the, to the jack for the, for the fiber service. So we're using our existing infrastructure to make it quick and easy. And one of the things we're doing is as we're, we haven't done, we haven't performed tree trimming in a long time. You guys know that probably. You look around the aerial plant in the city. It's probably not in the best shape. But this gives us a chance to go out and address that. So everywhere we're putting the new fiber, we're going to be making sure we're taking care of the poles. If they're broken, if they're leaning, to fix those issues. If there's separation issues, if there's clearance issues, broken lashing wire, we're fixing all those things and doing some minor tree trimming because we want to make sure that this fiber product doesn't go out as soon as we install it. You can't see it, but we have door hangers from a customer communication standpoint. Every home we pass, if we're going to be in the front yard, backyard, wherever, placing our cable, they get a door hanger placed on their door. And this will have a number that goes to an internal Frontier Compliments Management Team. We started out having those calls go to our vendor. That's the fox watching the hen house, not a good idea. And so we quickly moved over to our own internal system. We can follow up with the customer and make sure they truly are satisfied with the work the contractor does. We also have in-house inspectors that go around to make sure the crews that we hire, Direct Line is they're going to be the builder down here, does a quality job and that they actually restore yards, those kind of things. Where we do place buried cable, do directional boring. You're probably very familiar with directional boring. It's come a long way. I had some boring done on my property, probably 300 feet blind, 300 foot of blind bore under a garage. And they hit a hole about 24 inches wide, three foot deep, right at the bottom of the hole. Going under a building, you get there and you had no idea. He couldn't see it. Somebody was just directing. So it's very, you know, from a, from a control perspective, it's very good. Missing other utilities. Of course, we make sure we have locates, all those kind of things on the buried side. Let me see here, what else did I want to cover? So the fiber, this is not fiber to the neighborhood. It's fiber to the home. So we go all the way to a terminal in between a couple of houses, either aerial or buried. From there, run a line to the house. Fiber dropped, so it's still fiber all the way to the side of the house, terminates on an optical network terminal. From there, goes in Ethernet or coax to make sure we maintain that speed all the way to the modem. The modem's a state-of-the-art wireless modem that also has Ethernet connections. So you could plug in, if you want to plug in directly, you can. If you have a big home, we have the ability to repeat the signal wirelessly throughout the home. So you're having ubiquitous coverage in the home. And then again, that battery backup is available. I had some maps to show you what we were doing. I would say, looking at the maps, I'll just kind of show you. Again, we're starting, we're starting with a feeder to go out to more of a rural area, but we're going to start this year and build 300 customer locations in town. That's the plan. By the end of next year, we'll have 1,600 customer locations built. So the majority of it will be probably next year, but we're going to have a good start on it this year. And as we build it, we turn it up. So we go north, we generally go north, east, south, and west. And as soon as we put a hub in up north in the distribution, we don't start all of them and then just, you know, wait for magic ribbon cutting. We go north, turn up those customers. We go east and those routes turn up those customers, south and west. That's generally the way we build. So again, you, you'll have the presentation once you can pull it up and you'll be able to see those maps and see where we're going. But it looks like there are maybe one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And this map includes the outside of town areas in case anybody lives outside of town. Maybe they can see whether they're going to be covered or not for the grant funding. Looks like there's about half a dozen or more hubs. And a hub can serve 330 customers out in the distribution network. So looking forward to coming, coming down and build. And it's a great product and you'll love the price too. I'm not supposed to quote prices, but if you look online, we're beating the pants off everywhere we go, any of our competitors. I mean, we've had, actually, we're having a lot of competitors just stop their build because they know they're going to lose all their customer stuff. So it's about time. I mean, again, people have struggled with DSL for quite a while. And fiber is a kind of almost a future-proof technology. So any questions that you have?
Yes. We have a neighborhood that's across the river on St. Mary's Road that is not, does not have fiber, but the fiber lines are ready, but the houses can't be hooked up.
Oh.
And so I was wondering if that's...
You mean already, it's already happened, you're saying?
So the fiber, yeah.
Okay.
From a different company.
Okay.
Was already...
Oh, sorry.
Was laid, but they haven't hooked up the houses. So they're still on DSL. And so I was wondering, is that something that will be happening with your company as well? I mean, is there, is there a place where you're just going to do the terminals and not hook up people's houses or?
Well, to start with, we are going to, because we're going out with the county first with some of the grant funding, we are going to place a hub or two going out to the county. And then we're going to come back and could build those hubs this year. So we're not going to, we're not going to place terminals with the intent of coming back at a future point years from now. I mean, we really will have this all built next year sometime.
So it tends to hook up any house that wants it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. It's important that neighborhood over there because the rest of the town has had fiber for quite some time, except for that one neighborhood.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to ask about that one.
Yeah, I don't know if I showed you the map, if you could pick it out or not, or where it would be.
That's the ultimate build.
It's just St. Mary's Road is out here. It's this.
Okay, yep. We've got fiber, yep, we've got fiber going out there, yeah.
And then to the houses?
Yeah.
That's key, to the houses.
Yes.
We, downriver, if you go down the road, whatever situation would, I don't have fiber because one of the homeowners upstream decided that they, they wouldn't allow a phone to reach their property. So how do you address something like that? I mean, they just said, no, we're not going to have that.
So there's no utility easement out towards your location? No right-of-way, public right-of-way?
I mean, it's in town, so it's not like it's out.
Do you, did, did you ever have phone service from Frontier or Verizon or GTE in the days?
Yeah, it's not, it's not current, but it's not fiber.
Okay, we would just follow that same lead. So if you have phone service now, that means there's a right-of-way or there's a utility easement to that location. Is it aerial or buried?
I would say it's buried.
Buried. So if there's an existing copper cable coming to you that you have phone service through, that means that there's either a paid-for private easement through there already or a public right-of-way or utility easement through there. So we just, we're following the same path of that copper cable location.
I don't know how many other people face that situation. It really doesn't affect us. But I just wondered how you handle it.
There's some cities, we're dealing with Hobart right now, they have very, they have very limited right-of-way and they have a lot of customer-owned yards out to the center of the road. So we're having to negotiate passage through those or go aerial, find a different route around, so.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Senator.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Nick and Danielle. Is that, but rezone request?
So I spoke to Caitlin, Linda was last week. Nick and Danielle, who has some property over here on East 11th Street, and they're looking to rezone the property. Caitlin, I contacted her and she asked if, she wanted something in writing from the town prior to them doing their public carry or rezoning. Some type of agreement from the town or a letter or email stating, yes, we will agree or whatever the needs may be, we see sense. So I think she's just looking for...
Or support?
Yes, correct.
So this is a business that's been there.
I asked Nick and Danielle to be here in case you did have some questions, so if one of you would like to come up to answer.
Thank you.
Hello, I can try to answer any questions and I will ask Tim. Tim knows a lot about the property too, just from in the past.
So this is a business that's been residential area for a while?
There has been a business in this location for 50-plus years.
For 50 years, okay.
It's, it's been there for, at least that, that I know of.
And so why do you want to change it now?
We are looking into potentially adding on or doing some structural work to it in the future. And with that request put in, they said we would have to rezone into a business zoning if we want to change anything or add anything to any of the property.
Okay.
So we're not quite ready to add on yet, but if we want to go ahead and get that process sorted for the rezone, then we're at least past that.
Any other questions?
So there's other businesses around that property too, correct?
Yeah, and we're basically, we're bought up to the, to the state. Everything on Main Street's own business all the way down, I think through CBS or even further. And we bought right up to that too. There's businesses straight across the street. We got the funeral home a block away. I mean, there's plenty of, plenty of business in that area.
The funeral, is that a business?
It is. I mean, this is all, this is all their own business in the residential area. So.
The funeral?
I think so.
It's own business, I believe.
I think so. They have a very good business. This is something we should support in town. Good small businesses and they do, they have a model. They're doing really good.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
Just what do you, do you need like a motion or something?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to...
Approve the rezon?
Yeah.
To business?
I would say support. They'll be there, I think, because they have a decision in the middle of the hearing.
Support the rezon.
Support though, yeah.
Dan made a motion to support the rezon of 1107 Franklin Avenue?
No. Sorry, 129.
East 11th Street.
Sorry.
Oh, here, sorry, 129 11th Street, my bad.
I'll second.
Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried?
Can we have that sent by Wednesday?
I can send, I'll submit a email tomorrow and tell her if she needs something else.
Okay. Is that what your area is, Davis?
Um, we have to, start our paperwork is on Wednesday and then I think our hearing is the 10th of April, so.
Good luck.
But we have to put our, like all the paperwork's got to be submitted by Wednesday. Want to make sure we have everything ready to go. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next is the Laurel School Library Quarter Auction Donation Request.
So I received a letter in the mail from the Laurel Library requesting donations for their quarter auction. This was submitted by Laura Fromdok, the school librarian. She said they're in the process of collecting donations to be auctioned off on April 12th, 2024. We appreciate any support you can provide to our school library.
So my take is always the same. I wish we would come up with a maximum amount for the year, but... Does anyone have a motion for the Laurel School Library Quarter Auction?
What is it we usually do?
So we've done, the very first time, I think we had three requests. We did a day pass to the pool and then one free round of golf at the weekend rate. Last time for Laurel Pateo, I think we did two one-day passes to the pool and a weekday round of golf, so.
I would make a motion to do the two day passes to the pool and the one weekday round of golf again.
I'll second.
And one weekday? Weekday?
Yeah, same as them.
Same as the last?
Yeah.
First made a motion for two pool passes, two daily passes?
Yep.
Two daily pool passes and one weekday golf round. John seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Franklin County Community Foundation Community Cleanup Request.
So I was contacted by Shelley Loser from Franklin County Community Foundation. They, Franklin County Community Foundation is sponsoring the community cleanup for Earth Day, April 20th through the 22nd. She said years past, the town has allowed people to put their trash bags through around town by the dumpster located in the town park. She is asking if they can do that again this year.
Rocky?
Yeah. We got to get the dumpster back down there right now. It's a super difficult, still have to take it, add a part back down.
To the, to the park?
To the park, yeah.
So my only concern with this is, is anybody going to be at the dumpster? I mean, I would hate for people to load up the dumpster with all the tires from their garage.
Earth Day, April 20th through the 22nd. Did you have problems in the past? Or did we just get them back?
They've never done it.
And has it been a problem?
No.
Unfortunately, no, it's not a problem.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rocky, I thought you said that they didn't use our dumpster in the past.
That's what I said, that's my dollars.
That they have...
I said, Brent, when I talked to Brent, he said that they had like, maybe it was like a small organization. It was a small, like, a noise house or something or so. They didn't get over to clean up and then give it to them, put the trash. it was a small, like, any boys' house or six or seven, or so, they didn't get over cleanup and then weekday and put the trash wherever they clean up and we pick it up and we put it in the dumpster.
I mean, we could suggest that Shelley or somebody from the county, she has to monitor that. But the problem I have on there are, I'm just, uh, should we?
Whatever you think is best.
That's an order.
From, if they're requesting you to put it on there, monitor.
So I think in the past, the county commissioners had actually put a limit on the number of tires you can bring, but you have to take it to the dump dump, and they talked last year about having a special bag so you know it's not from someone's house, it's from the birthday cleanup, so, I, I haven't heard what they're doing this year. And with the county at least.
I know we can put tires on our dumpster. So I don't know if someone's wearing tires, I don't know. How they can get rid of those.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, if you want to, I don't know if that's possible, tell Shelley, if there's any items that the town can, uh, dispose of with Rocky, then they will have to take care of it from there, I don't know if that's an option or not.
Anybody else have any issues, questions? Someone want to make a motion, or?
Make a motion, we'll accept this proposal. For the birthday cleanup on the twentieth to the twenty-seventh of April.
Dan made a motion for the Franklin County Community Foundation to use the town dumpster in town park for birthday. Is there a second?
Yes.
John seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the Friends of the Franklin County Indiana Animal Shelter Street Collection.
So Patty Tua contacted me about a street collection date, um, she is looking for, uh, May eleventh with a reading date of May eighteenth, we currently have no street collections in the local area.
And this is on, uh, Fourth and Main and also Mill Street, Sixth and Mill Street, I think is? Fourth and Main and Sixth and Mill Street.
I make a motion to approve.
John, John made a motion to approve May eleventh for the Animal Shelter Street Collection, is there a second?
All seconded.
Curtis seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the Andrew Bean Memorial Softball Tournament Request.
Um, I received an email, I'm not sure what year this is for them, uh, maybe the third or fourth year? Um, they're looking to use the lower softball field Saturday and Sunday, July thirteenth and fourteenth for the Andrew Bean Memorial Softball Tournament, um, Crystal, did you have availability for them?
Yeah, they're, because they're available, yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the Andrew Bean Memorial Softball Tournament?
I make a motion.
John, Dan made a motion to approve July thirteen, fourteen, is there a second?
Yes.
John seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried.
Could, could we move softball up to?
Sure, now?
Yeah.
Laura?
Um, so as we're working through our projects, I think, um, as what normally happens in these things, sometimes different issues come up that we don't realize are going to be there, maybe, of some sort, and I think that there's some confusion the last few days with what was going on exactly. I think Rocky's trying to turn the water on for the Eclipse stuff coming up, or is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and to get in there and get to the electrical panel, so, um, he's, is, is it okay if I say what happened? Like, from my point of view?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so when I was taking my daughter to school on Friday morning, um, he saw me pull up to live on Main Street, so I was coming through that alley, and he stopped me in the road, he was like, hey, can I get keys? And I was so confused at first because I didn't know that this was, I wasn't sure what was going on, that I didn't have him with me, and I had to get my daughter to school, so I was like, you know, let me get my daughter to school, I'll send you a text or call, let you know what's going on. So, in saying that, I called, um, one of our board members that was going to be down there working on the structure, and I was like, hey, are you going to be there? And he was like, yeah, and I was like, okay, can you, can you give him access to whatever he needs down there? And he was like, yeah, it's not a problem. And so, um, I went on to work, because I work full-time, you know, we all, most of us, that volunteer still have full-time jobs, and, um, I got a text from Rocky asking if we didn't want him to have a key, or something like that.
I just said, I just asked if the town could have a key, if we could access that, if we, you know, with our, what happened is the electric got turned off to the restroom, and we had no way to access that because it's in the concession stand, because the breaker box for our lower restroom, so I couldn't get in there, did that turn back on, so we could get them cleaned, because we just had the water turn back on. And so I had to wait for Steve to come down and unlock it, which he ended up just turning everything back on, so I asked, you know, get the town that key, because we get in a situation here where we don't have to keep dragging somebody down. And I said, they would have to get together as their committee and make the call if we get key on.
So, and, yeah, and that's, that's kind of what happened, so, because I've never had this type of circumstance happen before, I called the previous president and I was like, wha- what happened here? Like, why don't they have access, or what was the story behind this? And, um, I was told that once upon a time, when the town kept the calendar down there, um, that they would give the keys for people so they can turn the lights on and such, but it also gave them access to our concession sign, and things were coming up missing or broken, and so the board then, I don't know how long ago this was, uh, voted to put a different lock on the concession side, so the people accessing it could only get to what they actually needed. Um, and then at some point, this is previous to me here also, so it had to be nine, ten years ago, um, the locks were changed, and it's the same lock, it was the same lock on both sides. Um, and I guess from my understanding, we, we've always had a key hanging inside the coded area that could be accessed, um, by the town or whoever needed to use it, but because that building has been moved and we're in construction, there's no key there for Rocky to use. As a board, we did vote and we did decide that we're just going to put a different lock on there and give you guys a key to it, that's not an issue at all, I just needed, you know, like I said, I think in the, the rush of it all, it kind of, things got confused, I think some feelings got hurt, that probably didn't have to happen if we just had a better understanding of what was going on, on both sides.
So you're, you're talking about a different lock, but it's the left side, right?
Yes.
Because the right side is the concession?
Concessions, yeah.
And, and do we need just inside the le- left side?
Yeah, we just need to decide whether, uh, I have a lock, so that's all on.
And that's.
Just a key, or you think, to the office or whatever, or you want to?
And that's fine, it was just more of like, you know, I have my own protocol to follow, I can't just do things on my own, like, you guys can't do your own thing without speaking to each other and voting, so.
Rocky's plans are not, uh, yeah, yeah, different ones.
Um, I do want to, I do want to mention on that, though, um, so I know that you guys are keeping calendar again, right, kind of, like, con- people have signed contracts, right?
Well, yeah, Rocky and I talked about that, we're hoping that next week, we get in contact with all of the groups that have come in, so they give us the contact information.
Okay.
Some of them already have already passed the own keys, we're trying to get, reel that in and get back.
Right, and that's why, um, I mean, that's why we wanted to change it just specifically for this, but I also want to mention that, I mean, that's where they access all the lights, so if they're, they're late, they need to get in there.
Oh, is that?
Yeah, but we still have very expensive equipment in there, we have a multi-thousand-dollar pitching machine and our security stuff is in there, that I, I think maybe if we could just know who is going to be in there or when they're going to be in there, which, we've always done that, it's always been a thing, you guys have always let us know. Um, but, we just would, you know, we want to protect that stuff as much as possible.
So how should we, um, work that out, just have them contact you guys, or do you want us to, to handle, really making sure that they're, I mean, I guess that access, how do you handle it before, when you were scheduled to stay?
In the past, usually one of us has been down there to help, if there's someone that we know or s- uh, an organization that does this every year, we wouldn't have a problem with them.
So like the rally for recovery, the BMO there?
Yep, and the car show, those are all normal ones that we have, it's just the extra things that, you know, we want to make sure that nobody's, I'm, most people are good, we all know that some are not, so.
I would, I mean, I would prefer to continue what you have been doing, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Probably we don't have anything out, or they may not be scheduled ever for recovery.
Yeah, the BMO and.
So the car show.
So, you know, when people schedule then, they, you tell them to come to the town, get a key before the event?
No, June, we have it in the past, the only ones we ever given like keys to the park to is usually the locals being, uh, car show, um, and that was just for the gates and stuff like that, so, yeah. Because otherwise, those leads, we've never given them keys to the park, we've always tried to coordinate schedules.
Since I've been on that, yeah, it's always gone through the board.
Tim was in office, you guys thought that's when that just started, or before that? Coordinate your schedules with the girls' softball?
Yes.
Yeah.
So do we have the girls' softball schedule also?
I don't, I don't think that we have a schedule, but anytime there was a function, if somebody asked to do a function, I would always contact the head of the softball league and let them know what was going on down there so they could either schedule around it or have it worked out.
Can, can we just have a schedule?
We don't have a schedule yet, I mean, I know it sounds crazy, but it's because, um, we have a middle school team schedule and I have to wait until the SEI organization, which is Southeastern Indiana, I have to schedule with them for all of our games, and I can't make the schedule for the little girls until I finish that schedule, so as soon as I get that, I will gladly hand it over.
That would be great, that way at least we have some idea of what's happening.
Just to.
Yeah, oh yeah, practices during the week, but that's usually, I mean, again, you guys usually contact us if somebody.
Yeah. So, okay.
Any other questions?
No, thanks.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next is the Randolph Park playground equipment. Rocky?
I did finally get our fourth quote for, that, like, this is, we got four different ones to go over and, uh, each, uh, two separate ones, I guess we have. And we intend to look at, we want to stop here, update the Randolph Park. Are they included, I think it's a lot, it's a lot.
I can't, I can't bear to hear you, I'm sorry, but.
Did you get the last copy from Sinclair? That was the last company.
So, yeah, Curtis, if you're looking for it, I didn't print out all these, because there were a lot of colored copies and a lot of copies, so it was included in the, um, the meetings folder under Randolph Park, and then all the quotes were individually in that folder.
Uh, every quote?
The copy that I had, I put it in sharepoint.
Yes, and this, that was January, and then we waited on Sinclair, so that makes the four families. Now, we're all done with everything, so we could go over, look at, see what we want, see if we want to go that route.
So is there any option or any one that you're leaning towards, or?
Uh.
I mean, are these all mostly the same?
They're pretty much about the same, just the prices are kind of dropping down. So, kind of. On board with an instinct, it seems you have more to offer for less money.
Um, just one that I was looking at seems to include, um, removal. Costs for removal, I thought, are you, are you going to remove all the, all the? Are you guys going to remove the equipment?
Yes.
And are you going to excavate or something, or, I'm not sure if that's said?
Yeah, we would just go to level off, we just kind of level off that one for, because it's a little high, so it's.
I don't know, does council have any questions, or?
I'd like to look at them a little bit, because I didn't know they were in the folder.
Curtis, do you have any questions, or? Dan?
Yeah.
Does everyone want to take some time?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's okay? Um, okay? So, we'll go ahead and ta- ta- uh, you want a motion table, John?
Make a motion table.
Oh, second.
John made a motion table, Curtis seconded, all in favor, all opposed. Thank you, Rocky. Next is the quotes for the park signs. So this is a quote, oh, maybe we shouldn't read it yet, it's a quote from Signary, Signary two. This is a quote for, to put, I think two park signs on the park, at both entrances?
Well, I should never do have another company, she was supposed to try and have them in today, but they changed software or something, so she wasn't sure, she would try and rest again zooming, but, and then it happened. So I'm actually waiting on the other, but yes, it's basically what it would be, it's two, a bigger sign would be for driving in entries, and the two smaller would be for walk-in, like, uh, portion football field and by the pool, not the hall cabin. There's, you know, there was one sign that said where Brooklyn Park was, and it's at by the football field, and it brought it off. Kind of weeks ago, but I actually forgot about, it even being a, a demo or so. That would be one sign that we had stayed where Brooklyn Park was, and, so.
So then you said this is going to be four sites?
It'd be four sites, yes.
Okay.
It's in the packet, but, um, I didn't print it off, it was in the email, um, but I just figured we're waiting on the second post, so I didn't print that.
The waiting table is still in my stock, so.
Okay. Motion table? Second, is there a second? All in favor, all opposed, motion passed, the table is for next week. Next is parking meters on Main Street.
I'd like for us to, uh, take, not take the meters off, but put bags over the meters and make Main Street two-hour parking, and see how it goes, look at it again after summer's over, September, October, and see if we want to continue with the two-hour parking, or if we want to go back to parking meters.
Is, um, is there any way that we can find out what the management plan is for the two-hour parking?
What do you mean?
Like, how, how are we going to enforce that?
Derek?
I think our, I think our first way that we would do that would basically, um, old school would be with chalk, where, uh, we would have to walk down each side of the street, document each car, make marks on the tire on the ground, and then two hours later, come back and see if any of those cars are still the same. Uh, or if we want to think about down the road, putting up cameras on, uh, the intersections, on both directions, we could get a timestamp that way also, also gives protection for what happens on the street, night or day, so, I mean, that's another option, but if for the temporary, we would just do the chalk.
And also, George, as he appeared at the last meeting, he said that if some vendors, if they see somebody out there to park for a while, you, you guys, so, and I think that's a very good.
And, and a lot of times, we will just talk to the individual to see where they're at or run their plate, we might know them or whatever, and we'll try to, uh, hopefully everybody will, uh, mind their manners and, and be respectful for businesses, and business owners will be respectful for the other business owners, and, I mean, we can always give it a try to see how it works, if it doesn't, we can always go back the other way.
And that's, that's why, look at it again after summer and see how it is.
So.
Go ahead.
I put, after the last, uh, council meeting, I, I put it out on Facebook. I put after the last council meeting, I, I put it out on Facebook, um, to kind of gauge perception of, um, you know, what the public wanted. And overwhelmingly, um, the response was to remove them. Very few people said keep the meters. Uh, there were some overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly people said remove them, but most said that there needs to be some sort of way to enforce. So, um, I think the two hour parking is a good alternative to that. I like the idea of not making it permanent to begin with to see. So if we take them out, we have to do what to do on the side street, but then it's paying for a street park to go back in, kind of got the sign slightly patched in the meantime. Um, one thing I would, I guess, like to see, um, from conversations with people, instead of doing what we did last time where we just made a decision and did it and then had a lot of people come up to us with questions like George and some of the other people on the side streets. I'd like to get the signs in place and maybe like a month of testing to see how the two hour parking goes with our current setup before expanding it to Main Street. Um, and then also to have a kind of a written enforcement plan so that I can share it with the business owners. Uh, but I would also like to see if Christine from the Main Street group can take a poll of the Main Street business owners and shop owners and see, because it's going to impact them. So I think everybody was in, um, agreement on Facebook that the people that would pay the price, you know, one way or the other would be the business owner. So I'd like to, to gauge, you know, a direct response and maybe ask Main Street or at least ask them if they'd be willing to speak to the business owners on behalf and know that they have a mailing list and an email list, um, just to verify that everybody's bought into the decision that we made before we make, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, but do you have an idea of when the new signs are gonna be in place?
I just picked them up today.
Okay.
She called me Friday evening. I just gotta pick up today, so. We started back on the motion, so we should work it. We probably will be able to deal with this media.
So if we waited until the beginning of next month, um, to, you know, make a decision on if we want to extend that to two hours, I mean, that gives us, you know, several weeks in between now for us to kind of come up with a plan in place that we can present it to people. It's just, I, I'm still supportive of taking it out based off the conversations I've had with people and, um, the perception that they do limit the ability for people to pull up on Main Street. Um, and a lot of people said it deters them from shopping in the business, which I think we absolutely don't want. Uh, but we also want to be mindful that we're not giving people to park eight hours a day and take up the space.
Can I just ask a question about the complaint? So if a business owner calls and says, and I've got this car out here for four hours, can you go there and give them, would you go there and give them a ticket?
No, we would have to, uh, we would have to mark it, but we would also contact that person, see where they're at, talk to them, see how long they've been there. They would probably, well, yeah, we've been there for a little bit too long or whatever. We would say we've had a complaint. We need you to move the vehicle.
But then you couldn't give them a ticket until two hours after you saw it the first time, right?
Not unless we actually physically.
You have to see it.
We have to see it, mark it.
Are you able to use the video so safe?
But if we had video, then we could go back with the timestamp and actually see the vehicle that's parked there and we could use that easily.
So if like George's pharmacy has their cameras around.
If they have cameras there, we could utilize their cameras, yes.
Same way with the bank, that's the businesses on Main Street, several of them have.
Yep.
And then you said option two was to look at video. So just from a legal standpoint, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled that tire chalking is a unconstitutional violation of the Fourth Amendment. The Ninth Circuit, which is out west, has ruled that it is not unconstitutional. We are in Seventh Circuit. Um, Seventh Circuit is not waiting on it and neither has the US Supreme Court. But there is, there's one federal opinion out there saying that tire, tire, tire chalking is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. So if we have other options, then maybe that's the lawsuit.
We have Wi-Fi on Main Street. We could extend camera access. We do have some cameras on Main Street as it is. So it could be an option.
Are there any other options besides?
Remember it.
Are there any other options besides chopping videos?
Unless, no, because basically unless you have someone, uh, dedicated 24/7 walking up and down and writing down plates and documenting it with, uh, their, either a camera or what they have, then, uh, that's the only other option.
There's some, there's some options, but they're real expensive right now.
The, the camera, the digital, yeah. I didn't know that that would be which direction you would want to go on that. So that's why.
But what, like chalk is good to begin with. It's not unconstitutional yet here.
Rocky, can you talk to us about what you said at the redevelopment, about where you're putting the signs? What, what, how many, how many two hour signs did you get?
When I went around the campus, I found like thirty eight spots. And then forty signs, you know, back out when I get in or whatever. What have you decided or what have you decided on like, uh, Roseburg parking lot, uh, Eighth Street parking lot? Going to put you out of parking there yet?
We talked about that.
You want free parking?
Free. You said free.
Yeah. Then we talked about the, um, the lots by Roseburg and by, um.
Eighth Street and then.
Now Sixth Street, turning into exactly what we were referring to, Main Street, turning into where the tenants were parking in the coffee shop. Can't, their patrons can't get in there because there's people on Main Street that's now parking there. Same way with Roseburgers or people using it for, I mean, there, there's parking beyond behind the police station, all along Progress Street. There's ample parking for people that work there to walk a little further to leave those.
You guys included the municipal lots in the ordinance.
I thought we did too.
For two hour?
You did, yes. It's in there.
I thought we did too.
Yes, it's in there.
We talked about it free, but then we.
I thought you said it was free, but because you wanted a big sign for the.
That was, that was before, that was when we took them out, before George came in and we talked to him. And then the second meeting, we changed those to two hour.
Well, there's quite a few people who park in our parking lot. That's the one you're talking about, that park there. And then they walk down the street to go to work and they parked their car there. So there's a lot of that, that do park there. Uh, what timeframe are you guys looking for your, uh, uh, two hour parking? What's the timeframe you guys are looking at?
Eight five.
Is there a timeframe in the ordinance?
So the two hour parking there was a timeframe. And when we were talking about the timeframe, it was about the fifteen, we were going to go to fifteen minute parking spaces within a certain period of time. The two hour parking is just two hour.
I, I think about eight to five business owners. That way residents might park.
What's on the gears there, do you?
Normally, we start doing that around nine o'clock and we go all the way till five, but I think it goes like nine to six. Cause we do shift change at six. But, uh, I think we can try it out to see how it works. I mean, if it doesn't work, we can always go back the other way.
Yeah.
And I'll say too, just looking at it, there's a court of appeals, Indiana court of appeals case from last year, March of last year, and an incident occurred in January of twenty twenty-two when there was a law, a city parking officer who chopped tires and the court of appeals didn't go into at all whether or not chalking the tires was an issue. Um, so that's the most, that's the case in Indiana case where at least it happened and the court didn't say anything about it.
So do we want to amend the ordinance to say nine to six, Monday through Friday? And Saturday morning? Or?
That's one.
Does anybody want?
So you can only amend an ordinance by an ordinance. So if you want to do that, then I have to bring back that. So you're saying? So right now, schedule three was the new schedule. That was the two hour parking. We went through and we came up with roads, separate streets that were in two hour parking. So you wanted to say the town council, we're right shy. It's just time to shut down parking areas in the town between the hours of nine AM and six PM, Monday through Friday, and when, was it just Mondays or Fridays?
Saturday morning.
Saturday at nine, nine to twelve.
Nine in there.
Is that okay with you, Kirk?
The only, the only thing I was thinking of was Nick's, because he's open until eight, the movie theater's open until eight. I mean, there's still a lot of businesses, I guess, are open longer, but.
And the bars.
I know.
So you just want to leave it two hour parking?
I would just leave it two hour parking if it's an issue. I mean, we're, we're going to respond based off of, I mean, right now, complaint based by the businesses, so.
We're trying to get more establishments to have alcohol or that people can move from one to the other and that's more not time. So, yeah.
So I'd, I'd say just leave it and then try it out before we amend it again if we need to amend it.
So if you wanted to do it twenty-four hours.
That means he's gonna have to be marking cars on Friday or Saturday.
If there's a problem. I mean, it may not be a problem after hours. We don't know. If there is and it's an overburden for the police, then we make a different plan. That's why I think it's good to try this out first before jumping on Main Street.
Uh, okay. I don't agree with you guys. I think we should just make it nine to six. That way you can help your alcohol. Leave your car. You, um, I don't know.
Or even, I mean, the ice cream spots open until eight, nine o'clock. The movie theaters open until eight, nine o'clock. The restaurants are open until nine, ten, so.
Give it a go. We just. You know what I'm saying?
We always put it nine to six, Monday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, kind of extended it. It's more in hours of bar areas or stuff. If that makes sense, we'll extend it for those two.
Okay, so let me, let me recap this plan. Are we gonna do what Curtis, uh, suggested is just for a month? Put the bags on and monitor it?
No, no, no. I think what, what I, what John initially suggested, uh, was that, and then what I suggested was to, let's get the, the signs installed. Um, let's try the two hour parking that's on the side streets first, fix the kinks there, um, ask Main Street group to talk to the business owners on our behalf to tell them that we're considering, you know, bagging them up for the summer, um, and moving to two hour parking first before we make any changes to Main Street.
Now, the weekend before the eclipse, we're having free parking on Main Street.
Do we have bags for those yet or is Main Street bagging those?
We have bags.
We did, yeah.
Okay, so for now, at this meeting, we're just gonna say install the signs.
Correct.
And we're not gonna do anything else. We're not bagging anything.
No.
And the signs are gonna, I don't know if you even finished that story about the signs. Uh, where are they gonna be put again?
Well, like where the, the parking meter for will be like every other, like the third spot or the second. In other words, it'll be like three, two, no, two, or two hour parking per side just to catch. Because if you put one back here, you put one up here and leave the middle open. A van parked in front of one. So it'll have to be like three. And what we'll do is jackhammer out the old smudges or the old meter for in the side.
And do we have to get anything approved by the state for this? Cause we're all there.
No, side streets, but like if we do it on Main Street, um, we have to get a state's approval for the signs. We, um, assuming we would have to for two hour parking because we've had to for like when we put up for, um, transporting for the trucks. And that is, what was it down by? Uh, the BP gas station, I think we booked one at one time. There's no trucks there because it's more of a test area trying to determine if they're gonna stay in Main Street because we get that, we didn't get a permission.
Is there a way to use the, uh, the post base and the post and then get like a nicer decorative sign versus, because I don't know, kind of what Main Street lined up with a bunch of big two hour parking signs versus if we could get a smaller placard where each of the, um, meters are now to designate that.
Yeah, um, I think we could work something there because on the side streets, I think when I got just like set with you shape.
Right.
Which, um, why can't they go with black sandwich on green or, I mean, or purple, say the pound. They have some options. So, um, yeah, we can go with something like around every sign inside. What's already on, over U A Street and possibly downsides, I think it's eighteen by. I'm pretty inside sometimes I would be on the side streets, so.
I think you could do something on the parking meter like you suggested. We can get by without getting permits.
That's why I said.
Yes, because they're already there. But if we start putting signposts up, we have to get permission, state.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me, I thought we were putting the signs on Main Street. My bad. So we're putting the signs, two hour parking signs after this meeting, where are they going now?
On the side streets. Where we, where we.
Just those few places on the side streets.
Fifth Street.
Thank you.
Fifth Street between Main Street and Progress Street excluding parking spaces that are adjacent to Valley House flats. Fourth Street from Fifth Street to Hennessy Alleyway located between Fourth twelve and Fourth sixteen Fourth Street. E-sixth Street from Main Street to one twenty-four E-sixth Street and all municipal parking lots.
Thank you.
You were correct, Jean.
So you got, you got forty signs for all those locations, right, Rocky?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I was, I, uh, went through there, but it almost all Roseburg parking lot. Instead of putting the posts through there, it's since it's the town building, we put two hour parking on the side of the building.
Sure.
And it's, oh, the rest of our side, we're gonna have to figure out something there. Cause the sign could just line up, but. So we're, okay, good afternoon.
Okay. So we're not doing anything with the parking meters on Main Street?
Four months.
Correct.
We're gonna see how this goes.
Where's Rocky? Are you tracking everything? Okay. Next, any more about parking meters? Anybody? You want? Thanks, Dan. Next is Triad Engineering Beautiful Park Parking Lot Project. Okay, this is the agreement, uh, for the parking lot project for Triad to begin the engineering, the soft costs for this, and this is exactly the numbers that they submitted with the CDVG grant. There you go. Are there any questions about this agreement? Is there a motion to approve that I signed this agreement?
I'm okay with that motion.
John made motion to approve the agreement. Is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is, uh, the police take care of our policy discussion.
I believe, I believe we discussed this at the last meeting, which was tabled. Uh, in our policy, it's, uh, in our county and to the adjacent county. Uh, one of the officers that we hired does not live in, in the adjacent county. He was just passed that. Um, it's up to the board. Uh, he's willing to pay double for what we are, uh, charging the officers uh, for a temporary six month period so that he can move and get down in the area so that, uh, he's looking every day to find something, rent, buy. Um, so he just asked me that. Uh, I told him that, uh, either way, uh, it's not in our, uh, policy. He doesn't live in the, uh, joint accounting, but, uh, he's asking if he could get a six month probationary uh, and he would pay the, officers are paying sixty dollars a month. He would pay one twenty a month for six months. And after that six months, if he has not moved in, he knows that, uh, he doesn't get the payback.
I'm good with amending the policy. I'm good with amending the policy, uh, just on a temporary basis because, I mean, his probation was six months, correct?
His would be three months.
Three months. I mean, within, after the first three months, I mean, I'm assuming that he's gonna be looking for housing. Three months. I mean, within, after the first three months, I mean, I'm assuming that he's gonna be looking for housing closer based off what you said, uh, when we hired him and also what you said tonight. You know, I would say up to six months, I mean, possibly three months, you know, based off the probation, uh, maybe four, you know, to extend. Cause he may not want to make a, you know, housing change while he's still on a three-month probation if somebody would change on his job. And I could see him not wanting to do that prior, but, um, I would also be in favor of determining the amount that he would pay during that time and then it would go back in the policy after. But that's just my opinion of it.
So can we make a temporary, um, personnel policy, Gina? Or Andy, who?
If I recall correctly, the change that was made is part of the salary.
Yes.
With addressing the salary.
Yes.
So it goes back to you can only amend it more than to an ordinance.
So we have to amend the salary in place?
Salary would say exactly what we pay on the course.
Well, we amended that. Um, State Board of the Council, I talked to them about that. They said, um, it doesn't actually have to be reflected in what they pay in the salary ordinance as long as it's reflected in the part of the policy.
So we would just be changing the policy?
We'd be changing the policy, yeah. Is Lieutenant Paul changing this policy too? Is this gonna be a part of all that? Cause there's other things in here, I think we have to.
Well, um, I have to get all of our stuff to Julian. Uh, we've been talking. Uh, she went on vacation and I have to get her that stuff too. We did go over a policy that was a take-home policy, which is very extensive. Uh, so we're just piecing a bunch of stuff together. So, um, she's going to get that to try to put in with what we've put into, which I think the one we got right now is like three or four pages long.
Right. And I think we approved this back in May of twenty twenty-two. That's when we asked you to put in that. So State Board of the Council, cause I attached the minutes to it as well when Council proposed that pill deduction. But person on our side was in here, she had probably been.
I mean, I think I would suggest if we, if we make a change to the policies that we, um, say the chief of police, um, may at the authorization of the board, you know, amend the, um, the drive time of the areas, um, from which an officer lives. And that way we don't just pigeonhole it into this one particular situation if you have an officer you hire in the future that is slightly, you know, outside of the one county radius, we don't have to keep coming back for this. Just he comes to us with the permission, we give it to you, we don't have to amend the policies every time.
Well, this policy says you can't even have a car unless you live in Franklin County.
This policy says surrounding.
This says officers residing within Franklin County, oh, or surrounding counties, I'm sorry, may receive an assigned take-home vehicle.
Number T says officers reside within Franklin County or the surrounding counties of Indiana may receive an assigned take-home vehicle.
Yeah, just start with that.
Okay, I, I, sorry. And again, he's willing to pay double just for the inconvenience.
So Gina, does that mean this, the police policy has to say thirty dollars and sixty dollars or?
Yes, since it's not stated in the salaries, it won't happen in the salaries. Um, State Board of the Council is fine as long as, as long as I can show it's approved in the minutes, he updates his policy with an effective date and then I would, for State Board of the Council, I would just have attached this updated policy and provide Council with this. So he wants to update that.
So update this. Well, there's, there's some other things in here that I think should be updated as well. I don't know, have you looked at this policy?
I think a lot of the updates are coming with your Lexicall. We'd need twenty thousand for them to update the policies. I don't wanna go through line by line and add new policy or to the police department. Not right now.
So do we have to do this now, Gina? Can we just wait for Lexicall?
He's asking the first.
Well, it's definitely for the officer, so I guess it's either he brings back the policy and include what you guys say. Or you, based upon what you approved.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, can we just, from what we've said tonight, can he just include that in Lexicall whenever we approve Lexicall? Or does he have to do this right now for us to approve at the next meeting?
So I think there's, so there's two separate things happening. One, there's a situation that he's trying to address right now. And two, there's a bigger look at the entire policy. So I think as far as the, I think the council could agree to authorize the chief to amend his current policy to include take-home vehicles to non-adjacent counties at double the rate. And then that takes care of this issue, but then recognizing that the whole policy is also going to be looked at in the future.
Is this, are you hiring the only one that applies to or is there gonna be the other two?
No, the only, only one.
Only one.
Only one? I thought the other two lived an hour away. I thought you were talking about the other two.
They're in surrounding counties, right?
Oh, they're in surround, in Howard Way and surrounding county. Okay. Okay. So can I get a motion to, um, for, for Chief Mitchin to change the policy, um, from thirty to sixty for those living outside of surrounding counties to Franklin County and to, um, what was the name of the part?
I think the time period, what do you say? Six months or three months?
For six months.
Six months.
I'd make that motion.
Curtis made a motion, um, to change the take-home policy. Is there a second?
So.
John seconded all in favor, all opposed. Motion carried, three to one. Okay, next is building permit one zero zero six, Kenneth and Mary Heinz. There it is. This is for six-one-one River Street. This is to improve with a deck, uh, handicap ramp and an awning above the front door. Pictures included. Any issues with this coming right up to the street?
There's no sidewalk there in this area, so nor do, like, if they're using a wheelchair or whatever, they almost have to go to the edge of the street.
Gotcha. Any other issues with anything?
We're not gonna run into any of the right-of-way issues we're dealing with on the property, correct? Cause if we let one person put it in the right-of-way, my thought was you can't force someone else to take it out and then also allow them to do it. So if it's in the right-of-way, I'm not okay with approving it while we're asking someone else to take theirs out.
Right, um, chances are it is in the right-of-way.
That, that's to me an issue because I think that that gives some basis for him not wanting to pull his out when we're asking him to.
What about ADA? Does that have anything to do with this?
Does it trump it?
Yeah, I mean, certainly ADA requirements as far as sidewalks, things like that.
So the issue, the issue on this one is that the, are they putting a ramp out to it?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a ramp out to the road?
Ramp out to the edge of the street, yes, yes.
So it's not necessarily a sidewalk out to the street. It's the ramp going to the edge of the street to be a wooden structure, same as fence. And it's in the right-of-way and we're asking someone else to remove something that's in the right-of-way.
Right.
If it were a sidewalk out there, it'd be a different story because it's still, I mean, there's sidewalks in right-of-ways all the time, but. I agree with why he can do it. I just have, I have an issue with asking someone to take something down.
I understand him. It is kind of a tricky situation.
I know Andy's creative and he can find things crazy on a whim, so. Can we pause on that while we go into something else with Andy? Maybe give him a brief statement.
Timekeeping software system quotes?
So I had met with, uh, or did Zoom meetings with a few different, um, options for us. I'm wanting to get away completely from time, paper time sheets, obviously, and the old time clocks. I didn't know if council had a preference of what they wanted to see. I'm still waiting on a quote. I, there's a couple of options with stationary systems in locations, but that comes with a cost, um, an upfront cost for the first year, but, um, I was maybe looking more towards going to something of the app that could come in those. This might be useful too, cause they have scheduling software with those, um, time, timekeeping software, um, for the apps that also if they create schedule, then maybe the pool employees or the golfing employees, they can share shifts or if there's available shit, they post it and somebody can sign up for it. I know the pool employees used an app last year for that purpose to communicate, basically. I thought that would be something that would cover everyone. I mean, it doesn't matter for the full-time, obviously, but, um, the seasonal employees, it might be helpful. So I didn't know if, um, council had a preference of what I should limit my research down to. I have two companies in mind that I am interested in. One, based on the time they're giving, we could get full-time employees up and running, I don't know, a week. That was the one called When I Work. They were probably the cheapest, but I'm waiting for something right back from him. And then there was another one, Seabiz, all of the same idea, and I think they were like five, like thirty-five cents a mark. Those user fees are based on the number of users you have at one time, so obviously they're seasonal. It's gonna be the highest. I don't know if that will pay, um, but the other ones, they, you know, just have their full-time and then a couple of part-time, and it'll all plus.
Um, so would this be something that like we would install some kind of contraction on a building and then if you have an app on your phone, you have to be a certain distance from the building in order to log in or?
So they call that geofencing and everyone that I sort of would have that capability.
Okay.
They also have time lock, which nobody was scheduled, you know, say eight o'clock. They can't come in at seven-thirty and push in and sit there for a half hour. It gives, gives them a capability, you know, can't block them before.
And, and can an employee then see all their available time on that thing?
Yes, so there would be the employee on their app, they would be able to see their time, um, and when they submit it. And then on admin side, obviously, I'd have to give it to the project heads. They would see the people that they're in charge of and have to approve any requests. And those, um, that actually, they would have to approve those items in the payroll before it even gets submitted to me. So kind of.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's a dream.
And as long as they interact with Keystone, obviously?
Uh, actually, I'm not even concerned about that. Um, a lot of them did say they have the software capability. They would just get asked Keystone, what their requirement is, and if they cannot notify, that's great. If not, I just go back to inputting the hours, but at least I have, I don't have to sit through the time sheets.
Well, I would hope that you could find something that's reasonable that interacts, I mean.
Correct, I mean, that's the whole of it. I think that would be the least of my.
We use their remote time clocks for our guys and it's very easy, especially from the backend of it.
So most of them, when I asked about submitting the file capability, they basically said they just ask key. Two of them actually are already compatible. They can submit the files that way. Two of the other ones just said they just have to ask what their requirements are for a file. So it didn't sound like it was too rigorous to us.
That's great.
So do you guys have a preference on what I should keep moving towards? Do, can I move away from the stationary clocks and two and a half system?
I'll probably, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll probably come back next time then, but.
Great, thank you. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five, establishing pickleball sports complex grant fund. Uh, this is an ordinance of, sorry, go ahead, Gina.
Nope, I was just gonna tell you, um, you did receive a distribution from Franklin County Community Foundation grant for the pickleball sports complex, so which I have to create a fund on my ledger. So really kind of establish the policy of five new ordinance to pass that. Go ahead, sorry.
So this just, um, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash five, the ordinance establishing the pickleball sports complex grant fund. This is now therefore be resolved with the town council, with the town of Brooklyn hereby establishes the pickleball sports complex grant fund for the purpose of receiving funds and making dispersments to be properly reported to the Franklin County Community Foundation or the directors. And this is for the ten thousand dollar grant that we received. Is there a motion to approve or any questions?
I'm a motion to approve.
Curtis made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
So.
John seconded all in favor, all opposed, motion carried.
Do you have this kind of announcement?
Yes, I started to suspend those. That's the first time that ordinance has been introduced, so the rules need to be suspended for.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Curtis made a motion to suspend the rules.
So.
John seconded all in favor, all opposed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So.
Curtis made a motion to approve. John seconded all in favor, all opposed, motion carried.
Good question.
Um, so back to the grant thing. I think it doesn't make a difference, obviously, with what they're seeking is maybe access to the residence. But I would just look at it as, I think they would need to ask for a variance because the issue with fence is not necessarily that it's constructed and said they didn't get the town's permission to construct it because it's been constructed and towns proper. And maybe, I, nobody knows how, I think that would not have to ask. I think that's what I'm thinking is that it's, it does make a difference if it's maybe.
It's a visibility issue too, fence.
Yeah, and, and, and it does make a difference that, you know, looking at that section of River Street that the ramp's not blocking any, anybody else's access, but I think that would be a variance process that they would need to go through, right?
Through, through the town?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, something similar to that for, um, I said, and like you brought up too, is that, uh, the other situation, those, the towns are approached about a permit and these, they're trying to do it the right way, so.
Yeah, I think, I think if, I, I think I would feel more comfortable if they went through whatever, um, steps they need to take as far as the zoning code, as far as a, like I said, a variance, because what you're talking about is an encouragement on the right of way. So they really would need to get a variance approved to be closer to the right of way that they're supposed to be. So that if it is brought, well, you let so-and-so do this, well, they apply for a variance because they need to construct maybe a ramp, the town ran that variance. That's what I think.
Can we send a, kind of like we did with Lincoln Daniel, send a, um, a letter of support, you know, that we support them, you know, if they do receive a variance? Cause I'm okay with the project as long as it, as long as it doesn't, you know, restrict us from being able to enforce something else that's an issue.
Can, could something be added to this that, um, once it's no longer needed, that it's removed?
I also thought about that too.
Yeah, a letter of support so long as the variance is only asked to current owner and cannot be transferred to a such entity.
Yes, they, they do own the property too. I, I just checked, so. I don't know how long it would be, but I didn't know if that was an option to put that in the, the variance or?
Yeah.
So I can write that on a permit? That would be helpful.
Well, I don't think the permit can be issued until the variance is secured. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around that. So the county has a zoning code. Do, does that, does the county's board make those decisions for the town?
Yes.
As far as something, yes.
So any variance requests would go in front of the counties or, because they do, I guess they do ask the town to weigh in every once in a while and certain things. So I think, yeah, I think if the town council wanted to vote to send a letter of support for the project so long as the variance is only asked to existing owner and any ramp would have to be removed upon sale of the property. Does that sound right?
If, I'm just kind of step on here. If, if they can build a ramp and, but then also put, put a sidewalk in, would that work?
Sidewalk would be fine because they're, they're in runaways all the time. I mean, every one of our sidewalks and some driveways and some structures are in runaways. They've just been there for, we have new sidewalks that's installed and runways the entire time. We, we just approved Kirk. We just approved Kirk's advice and.
This would be a little different in that it wouldn't be parallel to the property, it would be, you know, just straight out to the road, but that might be a workable solution. If they could just, I don't know.
I mean, if they go with a variance, they're gonna have to pay four fifty or five hundred dollars, whatever that fee is. It's expensive to do the variance, so I mean, I hate imposing that on them, just. If there's a way that they could do a sidewalk, and the town has a sidewalk in a runway, I think that.
Keep the ramp that far enough. Yeah, just keep the ramp that far enough and put a good piece of a sidewalk in so they can still get to the street. That might be something I could talk to them about, if it's agreeable.
I mean, at the end of the day, as Katie said, if they are asking permission, I mean, if we give a building permit subject to it being a temporary basis for ADA, you know, use, I think that's different than just allowing, I mean, I don't know that it locks us in for. I just hate seeing that they have to go through a forty-five, sixty-day process at four hundred fifty bucks. And Caitlin may say they don't need a variance, I mean.
I know that this deck does not have to go in front of the county, it's too small. So I really don't know what should say.
How long is the sidewalk, do we?
It's a seventeen.
I don't know, we have to, you probably have to work that out to get the angle of the ramp.
Because it may be cheaper to go through the variance than to do the sidewalk.
Six eleven.
Is it like yellow houses breaking on the bar?
Yes.
Six eleven. It's six to yellow, breaking the bar. So it looks like there's, you better pass it over there.
There's a deck, this is existing. But this is six eleven River Street.
There are trees in an area.
Yeah, that's a, the one down.
The third one.
Yes, yes, that's the third one. It's just hard to see with all the trees.
They're picturing the street, we possibly.
Is there a sidewalk there now?
Well, in September two thousand thirteen, according to Google. Wrong time, okay. So I think, I mean, I don't like to leave that out, but to just approve it outright without making it a variance puts you in a worse position looking ahead than to say, yes, you know, in theory, we're fine with what you want to do here. However, because you will be approaching on town's property, there's a variance process that you need to go through. And we're gonna send a letter of support for that, but it just needs to be adhered to. Why don't you give both options? Because I'm putting in sidewalk, and I was shocked by the examples.
Well, I don't think that the sidewalk would be good enough, or high enough.
Okay.
Just to get it out.
You could probably get some nice accessory from Gilman's sidewalk. Would you have a sidewalk fund?
We do. Half, we pay halfish.
Ish.
Halfish. We pay halfish.
So the issue wouldn't be the deck right now, so we approve the deck and then ask you to work with the scenario for the ramp slash sidewalk, would you be okay with that by approving the deck? At least get that started, and then they can figure out if it's a.
I didn't know if there were any considerations, because it is a handicap or not. I think it's all affecting that, so.
I make a motion to approve the deck, and then authorize Tim to, you know, work with them on a solution on the ramp to River Street.
Yes, that's it.
So that's the eight by four foot deck?
Yeah.
Curtis made a motion to approve the eight by four foot deck, John seconded. All in favor, all opposed, motion carried. And do I need to put anything else on the remark section of this?
I mean, as far as what is the approval that doesn't improve the ramp.
Right.
So then Tim's gonna talk to him about their options. So I don't think there's any comments right now, unless they need to, unless they decide they're gonna apply for the variance in the town to discuss and do all their stuff.
I just put only the eight by four foot deck approved in the remark section. Back to the pickleball thing, so one of the projects is the pickleball court, and the next step in the project is to engage an engineer to design the court. We had a meeting the other day. We had our initial quote for the entire area, which is like one point one, two million dollars. And based off of conversations with the engineer and how much money we have, not that much, it was suggested that we engage the engineer to simply provide us a contract for the design of just the pickleball court, so just the eight courts, not the restroom and not the, kind of like the phase two, what we call with the sultan, so that we can kind of move things forward. When I asked Tryon for that contract, he suggested that we talk to the pool council to see what you guys felt. There is no requirement that we have in our ordinances that requires us to go out to get engineering bids. So we can ask him to come up with a contract for just that smaller, more restrictive portion of the project, and see how much that's gonna cost, to see if we can kind of start to move this project along, and see how much money it's actually gonna cost for construction. So the pickleball, the sports class group can find out what that bottom line number is, because right now we don't have that, it makes sense. So if everyone agrees, then I'll ask Tryon to come up with a engineer design contract. How much is that gonna be to try to move that forward? Okay. You go now.
I've heard it down, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next is lifeguard certification and instructor reimbursements.
So Karen Bundy stopped by the office on her spring break and said that her certification, her lifeguard training is up in April. She said she would be willing to take the recertification class to train possible lifeguards this summer if the town would reimburse her for her certification to continue that. She said it would cost roughly around a hundred and forty-four dollars, I think she said, to get that construction completed. And she's willing to do so if she would be needed at some point to train her parts, either before the season or later in the season, how would that be work?
Do we need a motion on that, or just?
Well, and then also, we've had a couple of tend, sorry, we had a couple of tenants that came in, wants to be a lifeguard, asked if they would actually be reimbursed. Years past, we have done that reimbursement of her training, so. Now, do you want to do one motion for both, or?
I do that, I'm making that motion for both.
John made a motion to reimburse her lifeguard certification and other reimbursements. Curtis seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried, four to zero. And do you want to talk about the manager?
Oh, yeah, so we do have, I have three applications currently for managers, which I'm going to, maybe Tim would be willing to, you know, maybe schedule some time to talk with them. We have one coming back from last year, possibly, to do weekends. And then we have two others that are interested in just part time. So I mean, I'm hopeful if council agrees after the interviews, if they're, you know, approved, that we might have managers in place, and then they can do the hiring for the tenants and lifeguards. Out of that.
I think that's a grand idea, I'm very happy we have three.
Anybody want to sit in one of the interviews?
Yes, Gina, I'll sit in. Just give me some time. How does everybody ask you about that situation? Okay, okay. Next is the voided check creations.
So I was contacted last year by a former volunteer fireman. He found a check, a clothing lounge check, and a hundred dollars. He had not cash, that's valid cash. So I kept putting them on, because I was like, I don't know what to do with this, I've never had this situation before. So I emailed state board of accounts. They said basically, it's up to council. He did return the original check, so I do have that. I found the original claim, believe it or not, from two thousand twelve. The state board of accounts basically said, obviously, they don't think we're under any obligation to reissue the check, but if the council would be willing to, then I could have permission, but it's up to you guys.
Is there a problem with reissuing?
Motion.
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to reissue the check, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the FCC. Next is the FCC grant agreements. So this first one is just a letter of grant agreement. The town Woodville agrees to utilize the twenty twenty-four grant distribution from the canoe fest club endowment in a manner that is in compliance with the fund agreement. It's just one paper for me to sign.
So these are the endowments we received through the Franklin County Community Foundation. We've got one from the canoe festival club for the amount of three hundred eighty dollars, and then one from the Danny Fox Memorial Fund for eight hundred dollars. In their grant agreements, we have to only use those funds for improvements to the park. I think Fox Memorial can use for the pool as well, so. Signing the grant agreement, you guys are testifying that we were qualified and wishes.
And then there's two thank you letters, is that right?
I did drive thank you letters from the African Town Council to the, to Mrs. Fox and then the canoe festival club.
It's just a thank you from someone else. Is there a motion to approve my signing the letter, grant agreements and the thank you letters?
Curtis made that motion.
Curtis motion to approve, John seconded, all in favor, all opposed, motion carried. Next is the Sycamore Gas Project Agreement.
So Rocky had brought some plans that Sycamore Gas is going to be, what did you call that? Replacing their or extending their revenue? There it is.
A wooden subgrain.
Okay.
It's eight inches, so it's not gonna be able to board it, so I'll have to dig. Basically, I'm just letting everyone know, looking down in North Box, and I'll be back for you. It's gonna be from First Street, First and Harrison avenues where I'll start. And then on George Betsy, or whatever it's like. They're gonna try to stay in the sides of the yards or the, the movie spots they have to come across. And then going up to, yeah, just the road, or just past Dan's house, and we'll be turning back into there. And then we jump over to, from, I believe, the end, that's around. Fourth Street, this street, somewhere near, we'll go all the way down, No Street. So I understand the fourth side, and we'll be cutting across like Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Seventh Street, and then until they get to ballpark hill, and they got to cut up through ballpark hill to Danny.
The middle of the street?
Middle side, probably more in the middle, because we don't want to just go back malls or walk through.
What are they gonna do?
It'll be out more after April, so it'll be sometime in the summer.
What about the paving on?
They, that's what I asked them, they will, they'll go back, you know, patch everything.
Okay.
So I had asked Andy, we do not have, what do you call that, right of way utility permits? We do not grant those, so you had an agreement, but then they suggested that we should do one.
What we, what we were using for a long time in Rising Sun were right of way, it was, a lot of times it was directional boring by Comcast or whoever, and so it cut to be a bit cumbersome, because we would take them in front of city council every month, and a lot of times, we were waiting on the work to be done. So we did an ordinance that I think I shared with everybody, to allow, in that case, the street commissioner and they called the city project managers, I assume, to sign off on those without having them to go in front of council. And then, and so they were granted the authority to execute those agreements on behalf of the city. And then everything that we had in that agreement was then incorporated into the permanent application that the utility company submits. So I think I said the ordinance, I was trying to track down the actual agreement that we're using right now. I didn't find one on my computer, but I've switched computers since then, so. Just something to consider. But, I mean, you don't have to do that, it was just, it, I don't know if excessive was the right word, but it ended up being kind of a rubber stamping, that these agreements would go in front of council, and the street commissioner's already reviewed, and the city project manager's already reviewed, and council's like, okay, well, you're fine with it, we're fine with it, and it's like, there's gotta be a better, more efficient way to do this, and that's what the ordinance was.
To give, to delegate that.
To delegate that authority to, so like the town, it would be Rocky, Tim, to look at it and say, or just Rocky, you know, whoever you guys wanted to delegate it to, if you still wanted to delegate, if you rather, they come in front of the council, that's fine too.
I would rather delegate, but this would, so, because this is, the one thing I'm looking at is an agreement regarding the use of the city.
So that's how we were handling, we were doing those agreements, and those were coming in front of the council all the time. And then the ordinance is what we adopted to then allow the project manager and the street commissioner to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, without the agreement having to go in front of council.
Okay, so there's not another application for.
So that's what I'm trying to track down from like North Cut down to Rising Sun, is what, what we're sending people now when they, when they need to do work. Because like I said, I tried to find whatever reason on my computer, and I couldn't find it, so I still haven't tracked that. But it would be, it would, it would look like what the agreement is, because there's still, we still want all those things, we still want them signing off on all those things. We're just removing the step of, we have to take those in front of council.
And this way, the town knows when the utility is doing work in our town and ripping up our streets.
I have a question for you, does Rising Sun, do they have standards, like if they do a road cut, do they have standards of what they have to put back in this ditch, or then?
That, I don't know.
Okay, I would like to see something like that also, instead of just throwing the stuff back in the ditch that they pulled out, that they have to vet it or put gravel in or fill or something, so our roads don't, the road ditch doesn't sink after a while.
So would that be included in the ordinance?
And that, like I said, we, maybe what I can do is have Tim, and maybe I can get Tim in contact with Mike Northcutt down at Rising Sun, because again, what we were dealing with, a lot of those directional boring, so they weren't tearing up the road, and he may handle those situations differently, Tim, when they're actually having to vet it, the, after white talk. So I can try and get Tim in touch with Mike, he's a talker.
Alan, do you have something, can you come to the closing?
When utilities come in, there's gonna be myriad of situations. So we have the on-call agreement with you all. If there's a, if there's a project that needs to be reviewed, then we would review it based on. on standards, end-up standards and all of that, make sure that they're going to be taking stuff out and putting it back in correctly. And you just do it on-call situation.
Oh, we don't have to, we don't have to write, write down standards, maybe?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, certify it, see if anything's flying or not.
I think, just, just me, I think that we'd have to have some kind of standard so we can let the utility companies know when they sign an agreement, that this is the way that you have to do this. You know, whether it's by end-up standards or different standard, county standard, whatever.
I believe that's how the county commissioners do it now. They have stated, told they want to abide by.
We did, we started retiring the road code in New Haven.
Especially for, yeah, New Haven.
Correctly, they did that too. We do this for other towns and cities.
Okay, so what do you suggest Andy we do now for these terms?
The ordinance and the agreements are all going to take in, so I just kind of sit on those now. I'll get Tim in contact with Mike down in Rising Sun, so they can kind of put their heads together as to how we handle it. And then I also still need to track down, except for Mike, what we're using now that we've adopted the ordinance, right, what we're having people fill in on.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next is the soft bin code update. Rocky?
Yeah, we finally finished putting all the sides over, the bottom around the sides, definitely the ceiling block, so we're ready for the spray foam, for the ceilings. So we come back down, look at it, of course, about everything from August, or from October to now, it's almost doubled in price. So this went from 2374, so now it's going to be 4527. So I guess I'm asking.
Do we need a motion on that?
I guess so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new bid.
John made a motion to approve the bid from KNS insulation for $4,527 for spray foam on the ceiling of the soft bin.
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm standing.
Curtis abstaining? Girl softball is done. Next is new police hire.
I sent you guys information on Friday. Did you guys get that? Did you get that done?
John, we got a question.
I'm asking to hire Savannah Sturgill for the replacement of Officer Bo Stat who went to Oxford.
Before you start, I apologize. I did not announce this in the meeting after we got this resignation from Bo Stat. I'm sorry. I don't know how I missed that, but Bo, did you guys space on his letter or anything? Okay, okay. I completely spaced on it anyway. Here's his letter, if anybody wants to see it. Sorry, go ahead.
Asking for the higher Savannah Sturgill.
Was she one of the applicants during the first round?
It says this file is too large to review, Gina. What's, ah, that is a lot of time.
I mean, I've got everything else.
Oh, that's okay. So this officer does not live in Mr. Island County. Is that correct?
She lives over by Sergeant Sam Williams.
In Mr. Island County? Dearborn County?
I think like five or 10 minutes from Sam. It's a, or it's adjacent county.
This is a different officer that you want to take on the equal policy.
I think I asked that question earlier. I said-
Take home the vehicle, hang on about one or two for our.
That was one of the ones we hired last time. Because the take home came up when he mentioned hiring the new officer last time, so we really have to amend the policy.
I know, but I asked that question. He said it was an adjacent county, and I was like, oh, okay, then I don't have to do anything.
She's an adjacent county. She's in Dearborn.
It doesn't matter. It's, it's, I'm confused. Thank you. Go on. Play the tape. I asked the question, okay?
I made a motion to the higher.
I second. I second.
Big question I have is make the fault as far as officers?
Yes, yes, sir.
Which is nine.
Yes.
Look, Curtis made a motion. John made a motion to approve the hiring of Savannah Sturgill. It, Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. I just have an announcement about, not really, just a couple announcements. Okay, Dora, so the Main Street and team is still ironing out the images to put on the signs and the images to put on the cups and all that kind of stuff. And I think in order for the ordinance, we only, we only owe a map and the hours of operation, I believe.
Seven hours. This doesn't play out anymore.
Yes. We looked at that. And that, that team is also still collecting the applications from each of the businesses that would like to be included in the Dora district, that currently have a legal license to sell. So those are applications that are also part of the packet. And there's also part of the packet are any schools or churches that are within 200 feet of the Dora boundary. So we know that Wildcat Academy is going to be part of that. And maybe, um-
Two minutes.
Uh-uh, it's too far away. It's only 200 feet, which is the alley, basically, from Main Street to that first alley. Maybe Methodist Church and maybe the Evangelize Now.
Would be, this would fall in the head part.
So this is the question that we had for Andy, because in order to draw the boundary, I think Andy said that we had to draw around the property of the establishment. Is that right?
I think you asked about Pioneer, right?
Yeah.
I asked about that.
Pioneer.
Yeah, like El Roparro as well. So like, for instance, when you come out of El Roparro, you're on their property, and we want those people that come out of that door to go to Main Street. We do not want them to go to the alley. And so we were hoping to make Main Street the Dora district and not the surrounding streets around Roparro. Like, for instance, if you want to include the property of the Pioneer, you have to include Franklin Avenue. Now, we do not want people to be walking on Franklin Avenue behind the Pioneer. Because that would have to surround the streets that surround property. And so we definitely don't want people walking on Franklin Avenue, because we want them to come out of these establishments and go to Main Street. So we were hoping that the Dora district could say something like, the, the premise location or the, the property of the premise, and then Main Street, or then Eighth Street. So like the VFW, we don't want to include Probably Street behind VFW into that residential area just to include the VFW. We want them to come out of the V and go up Eighth Street onto Main Street. So that's why, you know, before we do the map, which is obviously the biggest part here, we want to include, you know, like Third Street, a little bit of Third Street. So when they come out of Hilltop and they're on Third Street, they come out of Third Street, but then they have to go to Main, because you can't go in there. We don't want you to go back to the residential, right? But if we include the property, we'd have to include that alley.
Would you include Court Street then, to get to Pioneer?
Yeah.
So it'd just go to the back, behind Court Street, back up to Main Street?
Right, so it'd be Court and then a little bit of Fifth and a little bit of Fourth. So they come out of the Pioneer onto Court Street and then-
We gotta include the courthouse.
Yeah, of course the courthouse. That's where we have festivals, maybe. So that was the question from the team.
I mean, it looks like this one was, this was a show you know, I think they literally just drew lines on a map. They don't have like a formal description. It's just a line on a map that gets submitted with the application for.
Oh, okay, so one of the examples that Main Street found in the ordinance is you had to actually spell it out, east on Fifth, west on Main, blah, blah, blah. So that's why, we, we just weren't sure.
Right, and, and not, they haven't been that many of them has yet.
I would list two.
There's not even a sale.
Cuts purchased.
At the brush.
They're special cuts, yes. They have to be, I think, we were talking today about a yellow cup with a, with a signature door, with a door on one side, and I think they talked about words on the other side, kind of just basic rules. And that's the only cup they're allowed to walk around with. So the police can clearly identify from a distance, it's the yellow cup in their bid. Or similar, but I don't know.
Are they going to include any of the, so like the chicken fry off, some of the parking lots that we have events in, are they going to include those lots on it too? Because they could, if you walk from Third Place or Hilltop, and then the idea is you have those events going on, be able to walk in there to that event.
Well, Third Place is not an issue, because that's his property.
Right.
But now you can walk out of the restaurant area and on the sidewalk and into the event space, where usually you had to have that landmark, so this would not-
Well, I, I just meant for like bigger events, like we had concerts before, different things.
Like in our municipal lot.
Yeah, the Rosenbergs lot.
Yeah. That, good question. I can bring that up to them and say, that's where, I just, I feel like if it's adjacent, well, no. That's a question for Andy. Court Street, not an issue.
I mean, there are curries, so it looks like, according to the, I'm calling it by the commission, there are three, six. Nine doors that are stated in the interim currently, and everybody's map kind of looks different.
Everybody's blood.
The map kind of looks different. I mean, I know, like the ordinance from Marsburg that I shared doesn't specifically have the, from this point to this point, spell out, but they reference their map, and their map does have, you know, the Dora boundaries noted by six different points. Points are numbered on the map, and then intersection of West Center Line, intersection between Center Alley, it's 31, but other ones aren't marked. This one is One Iron Lake, or whatever that is. It's just a red line on the map. So we're just going to have to keep.
It sounds like they'll take any map.
Exactly.
Sounds like they'll take any map.
So Andy, the, the, the team will wait for your lead on how we draw the map, whether we have to include the streets around their property, or just their property, or just the street in front of their property. So we, we, I mean, they're, they're working on all the other things, the graphics and all that. So the plan is to bring everything to this council. I said March 18th, they said, uh, one year. So hopefully we'll, they'll get enough of the applications back by then. Last but not least is the fire department contract. So I think it was, oh, several months ago that Andy suggested that we do a fire department contract. And so just an agreement, and it's actually a law that's being put, pushed around the state house to require municipalities to actually upload that agreement into Gateway. So Gina said, let's see if we can get another council member with Gina and I to hash out what we want to put in the contract. So me, John, Gina, and we'll find out what marks available. And we'll try to get that knocked out, so that we don't have to worry about it anymore. Last but not least is, right now, the townships are kind of probably looking at what they're going to spend on the fire departments right now, because they submit their contracts to us, and they're way agree, and then they go back and they sign. So I guess I would just like permission from the council to talk to the township trustees and see if we can pull out any more money from them, based off of the fire tax that they're collecting. So some of our trustees are collecting a fire tax, they're all collecting a fire tax, and that fire tax is all for the volunteer fire departments, but some of them are keeping some in cash reserves. And so I would like to ask them if they could give more to the volunteer fire department to kind of offset what we're paying, because we don't tax the citizens for fire support, the townships do. So I guess I just wanted to see if I could just talk to them and see if they might give up some more money.
I think it's worth a conversation.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
So the statute says the boundaries of the rezoning area by street addresses. So like, so Marsburg says, you know, their map includes different intersections, you know, six different points, and that's the boundary, includes a description of those and those points. Fort Wayne's is an actual, like, we went out and hired a surveyor to totally describe this boundary.
It means the boundary surveyor?
Yeah, it is. It is, yeah. Greenfields is a, it's a pretty big one. It's a pretty big door, but it's, you know, the Dora boundary, starting point, intersection to Main, off of East on Main, 200 block west of Main, north in the alley, to East-
Yeah, so that's what I started to do, and it's like, gosh, this is a long one.
So I think you, I think that you draw up where you want the boundary to be, and then figure out how.
To describe that.
To describe.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else, council?
I just have a real quick, I have four CDs that I'm referring. Current letter of SCNA, I called around today to get, to get rights, two local ice in town, the same five percent. I called Ruston, Indiana, theirs current is five with three no. I prefer to keep them with possible, yeah, council with three no.
What was your, what was your preference?
Five with three no.
What was your preference?
What bank?
They're at SCN right now, so I just keep, no.
I vote SCN. Is that all, Gina?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments from the gallery? I see no further business to come before the board. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
John made a motion to adjourn for a second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming. We need to adjourn.